And so we cannot, we cannot hear the items today. So we apologize profusely. But we need to do though, what we will do for you all is at the first meeting in January, put this whole, whole agenda first. Let me hear everything quickly. And if you have some situation where there's a permit that from a urgency point of view, then you see Marka. In terms of whether she can administratively sign up on something, if it's a real urgency before the first meeting. When is the first meeting? January 3rd. So. So we really apologize. We all got this email at 2:30 in the morning. And, and the councilman will give him grace exactly when this meeting starts as his kids' criticism happens. So, and we knew that in advance. So, so we really apologize. But really, if you have any timing issue, please see Marka and see what we can do for you. If willing, could be flexible if they can be on anything in there, especially that's been here multiple times. We can, we can see what we can do.
I mean, if you would want like a local committee to give approval, they want staff.
Yeah.
On final.
Yeah. So if, if anything's in designer view and local gives final, totally fine with that. Are you guys okay with that? If someone has an issue?
Yes, the only thing I've, one that I probably would not think was.
Yes, that's the opposition. So we will not hear the clean complaint. Right. I mean, you can't do that. That, that's a very large project. Oh, good. Wait, we have good news.
Everyone, I'm here.
Oh, good. All right. Well, now we have a forum. So disregard all of that. Surprise. Our project, Fire Crew. All right, let's call the phone. All right, well, let's actually read the preamble first, if you don't mind, Marka. And by the way, welcome, Marka. We are so honored to have your leadership. And we are here to support you and your team. And welcome to the new team members. We've got like the green team here. Please, or anything, but welcome. And if you would need anything from us, do not hesitate to reach out to any of us. Go ahead. First of all, we have to read the rules. And Marka's going to read that and we'll take the roll. By the way. And thank you, Drew, for jumping on. It's a very brief agenda today, so.
In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law in section 101.021 of the certified ordinance of Cleveland, Ohio, 1976, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted. All boards and commissions under the purview of the city planning department conducts its meetings in a manner modeled after Robert's old support. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. Refusal from any vote due to a conflict of interest should be stated for the record prior to the taking of any votes. In order to ensure that everyone participating in the meeting gets the opportunity to be heard, we ask that online participants use the raise your hand feature before asking a question or making a comment. The raised hand feature can be found in the participants panel on the desktop and mobile version and activated by clicking the, the hand icon. Please wait for the chair or facilitator to recognize you and be sure to select unmute and announce yourself before you speak. When finishing, when finished speaking, please lower your hand by clicking the raised hand icon again and mute your microphone. We also, we will also be utilizing the chat feature in, to communicate with participants. The chat feature can be activated by clicking the chat button located at the bottom of the web screen. Oh, you just. Oh, sorry. Okay. All right. So the meeting rules and procedures. The chair will call the agenda item and then each, for each applicant will be invited to proceed through their presentations. Each presentation should be completed prior to questions and comments from the commission in order to facilitate a smooth presentation. Once the presentation has concluded, the chair will ask planning to staff to summarize design and review advisory committee recommendations if applicable. And any public comments received. Public comments received through the proper channels by the deadline are distributed to commission members prior to the meeting through Dropbox. Staff will also identify any members of the public present and scheduled to speak. Public comment is allowed at the discretion of the chair and any individual providing public comments is permitted two minutes to speak to the agenda item in which they have an interest. The chair will then request a recommendation from staff if applicable. The commission will then begin deliberations and project review. Any commission member except the chair may make a motion at any point after the effort and agenda item has been called.
This one before this.
That's what I thought. Can we go back?
Here we go.
Okay. All meeting activity is being recorded via the Webex platform. These procedures are also being live streamed via YouTube. All requests to speak on a particular matter submitted through proper channels have been considered. We have all, we've also received emails from those who have provided written comment on a particular matter. Proper channels or comments are listed below. Communications with members of this, of this body must follow proper channels for consideration. Any comments received by Wednesday 12:00 PM deadline are collected by city planning staff and disseminated to commission members prior to the scheduled meeting. Proper channels for public comment, sending an email to city planning, that ClevelandOhio.gov address with a comment or letter, calling in or leaving a message at 216-664-2210. And sending a letter or dropping off comments at City Hall 601 Lakeside Avenue, Suite 501, Cleveland, Ohio, 4411.
Thank you. The public on. Anthony? Present. Luke?
Present.
Curry?
Present.
McCray Scott? Sergeant?
Present.
And Slate. We have a forum. All right. First item for order business is to approve the December 6th meeting minutes and the December 20th. We need to go that crap?
No.
Or this is the 20th, December 6th. And we have these in advance if anyone needs to read them.
And chair move to minutes.
Second. Motion and a second, call the roll. Anthony? Yes. Luke?
Yes.
Curry? Yeah. And Slate. Or sorry, Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay. First item in near west Clover Apartments has been postponed.
I know, but pardon me. It appears we have to nominate.
No, that we do. It's a mayor.
It told me agenda.
But I was going to clarify, she's a mayor. We're the NASA commission. Remember, we have to.
No, I think the, the, I mean, the director guessed it.
So we have to.
Yeah, you guessed it the last time.
So we're basically accepting the nomination from the mayor.
Yes.
Okay. So do we know a motion to accept then? I would say, please, the chair, or sorry, the director is appointed by the mayor. So I think we'll accept this nomination now.
Well, chair, I move to accept the nomination of the city planning director in City Cleveland.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Thank you for your service. Your willingness to serve. Call the roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Curry? Yes. Sergeant?
Yes.
And just as you did when you stepped in at the beginning of the administration, we are here to serve you. If you meet us, call on us during this transition. First item on the agenda is postponed. This was the Clover Apartment. Second item on near west design review is Cleveland Clinic Hospital North Campus Expansion. This is at 18200 Lorraine Avenue. I need anyone who's going to speak this to swear you in. We also got two letters, formal submission, agenda, and to the commission to read about this. And if there is anybody from the community that would like to speak to this, after we hear the presentation, I will allow public comment. So I'll, I'll just ask and then you'll state your name and we'll go from there. Did we choose to present this from the Cleveland Clinic?
Hi, I'm Andy Lane. I'm with Canon Design. I'm representing the Cleveland Clinic and I believe there's someone on Cleveland Clinic's side as well.
Okay. I need to swear you both in. Who's the Cleveland Clinic representative?
Matt McCrayald from the Cleveland Clinic.
Okay. Do you both swear to tell the, or do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? This you show answered with a penalty of perjury?
I do.
You do.
Okay. We will take, this is for conceptual approval, just so it's stated. So we will see this again. And it went to the far west of that review. And we will hear also from the planner wants the applicant to that. So go ahead, take it away, Andy.
All right. We were, I guess, I'm trying to find Brian Johnson. Are you going to be able to share the screen that shows the presentation?
Oh, we have it up.
Oh, yeah.
Whatever you submitted is on here, so.
Okay. So if you can advance, yeah, advance a few slides. I think we have a, I was going to start with an aerial sort of demonstrating where we're located. Right there. Right there. Yep. So this shows where we're proposing the project, sort of the far west end of the Cam's Corner area. It's directly to the north of the existing Fairview Hospital at Cleveland Clinic and right along the edge of the Rocky River. So that's kind of the general area that, or that is the exact site location that we're going to be proposing. And then next slide, please. Zoom in on that site itself. This shows the existing condition of the campus. And it shows sort of the parking and the buildings and the distribution of the parking showing the current parking demand on the campus. Next slide, please. The project we're proposing, as you can see, the new cancer center and MLB towards the upper left-hand side of the screen. And then this is showing the new distribution of parking. The important thing to note here is these are modernization projects. They're not adding new demand and any appreciated value to the campus. So the total net parking demand on the campus is only about 20 cars. And, but we are redistributing how that parking is across the campus. And we are, if you see the site B there, it's kind of small. I believe it's site B. Where the 170 cars, that was, that's an existing building and garage that will be removed as part of this project to make room for the new. Next slide, please. So this is the project specifically showing the new building and the parking structure. What we're showing here is sort of the main traffic patterns we're predicting or planning for. The bold red arrows are the main traffic patterns of patients and caregivers. The lighter orange arrows represent secondary vehicle traffic service and maybe some smaller service type vehicles that would enter the site and smaller parking access. One thing to note here is on the small arrow towards the bottom right-hand side of this image with the orange dot that shows just a new curb cut into an existing parking lot. It's going to allow some more leeway for parking to stack and back up there in case they need to make turns out and and out. So it's going to help with some of that traffic flow at that location. Next slide, please. This project will need to be phased. There's an existing cancer center today on that parcel. So what we're showing is we have to maintain the existing cancer center while we build the new cancer center. Because those patients need to maintain, have continuity of care during the construction. We will have a construction barrier set up to separate the existing from the new. As we're doing that phase one construction, we are going to try to create as much perimeter landscaping as possible where it's not going to be impacted by construction activities. To start putting planting around the edges of the property to help shield the neighbors and allow those trees or plantings to really become mature as the building matures in its construction life. And we are going, as part of that phase one construction, we're going to provide a new curb cut along 179th Street. That will allow easier access into the existing mole cancer center and avoid disruptions with the construction traffic. Next slide, please. Once we have the new cancer center up and MLB up, that's where we'll have access for occupants to enter that building, which allows us then to take down the existing cancer center. So we'll start clearing the site for that and add some temporary access drives up to the north. Access is 179th Street. We are considering proposing. Taking 179th Street and blocking it off at the end as it hits Eileen Drive. But we are working with the city still to kind of figure out if that's something that will be supported or how we would do that. So there's still a lot of work there to be done to try to figure that out. But we are proposing or considering that as an option if the neighborhood and the city think that's a good idea. So we're in communications there with both still to see if the viability of that option. Next slide, please. We, as we clear that site and existing building, we then build the new parking structure. Again, we'd have to separate that from the existing medical office building and cancer center so that that construction activity doesn't impact patient care or safety. And we will obviously build that and then extend some plantings and things around the building as that becomes more finalized. And the next slide, please. There'll be some final site work that'll be done at the end after the major construction activity is done. We'll go in with the final plantings and we'll work on the buffer zone between our building and the neighborhood to create nice green spaces, et cetera, that would help buffer our building from the neighborhoods. Uh, next slide, please. So part of that overall concept, which we're still very much in development, is we're trying to take the idea of the bucolic setting of the Rocky River Park Valley and the trees and all that great natural setting, metro parks. And bring it extended into our site and beyond so that there's that linkage to that great natural resource. We're also very intentional about activating Lorraine to make it a more pedestrian friendly streetscape. Bringing some of that green space along that edge and also creating the public spaces along Lorraine so that you're not seeing the parking garage. You're seeing actually public spaces in the building. We'll see some of that when we go into some more detail on how the building is planned. Next slide, please. This shows an axonometric of what that ends up looking like with some of the massing and stacking. We have a four-story medical office building, cancer center with some mechanical space on top of that. And then a five-story parking structure next to it. You can see there along Lorraine and a bridge that crosses, I failed to mention, we have a bridge that connects our public spaces of our building back across to the main campus that spans the Rain Avenue. But all that space that kind of sits in front on the south side of our building and the parking structure is public spaces of the building to activate that streetscape and also provide a clear wayfinding opportunity for people parking in the structure to get back to the main campus across the bridge. Next slide, please. These are some site photos, so what you'd see in the neighborhood if the building is constructed as currently conceived. So on the right, you see the image showing where someone might stand and be looking towards our property. If we were to do, if we were to close off 179th Street and we had some landscaping there as part of that. You can see the top photo on the left shows a kind of existing photo with plantings and where the green line represents where the building would be behind that. So pretty well shielded from, by, by nature, from the views of the neighborhood. And then the bottom photo just is confirming that with our computer models. And then next slide, please. Also showing another view, how that would sit into the context of community. If you're sitting on 178th Street, looking back west, again, the green line of the top photo shows sort of the outline of our building. And how the existing foliage and trees help shield that with as long, remember as far back because of the buffer there between our building and 178th Street. And then again, the, the photo on the bottom left shows a computer model with the same, same thing. Next slide, please. So how's our building as it's planned right now? What you'll see on the next few slides, the yellow spaces are public spaces, circulation spaces, lobbies, et cetera, along Lorraine. The blue spaces represent where the clinical functions of the building would be. So patient care and then the gray area is obviously the parking structure and how you access. You can see the red arrows again, representing how you would access the parking structure from Lorraine down 179th Street. And then there's pedestrian entryways along 179th, including the bridge on level two. But again, that the intent is to drive that public space of the building across the front of the parking structure. So Lorraine is not, the parking is not along rain. It's the building and some more active space of the building. So it really livens up and activates the, the right of way. Now, as you go up to building next floor. Next slide. Yeah. We, the part of that space along Lorraine that's activated is a two-story space. So as you enter on ground one, you'll be able to see up to ground two, level two, which is where the bridge connects back to the existing hospital. But again, the public space all along the south there with views out to the west of Rocky River. Then clinical spaces, obviously, on the west there would be, have great views of the same Rocky River Valley. Next slide up, continues with more public space on the south and west and then the clinical space to the north and with the views to the west. And the parking structure still obviously to the east. And then as you move up, one more slide, please. Again, the, this is where the floor where people will be receiving infusion. So they'll have, they'll be sitting there the longest. So we want to prioritize those views along the west there. So as they sit and receive care, they have beautiful views of nature, pro healing. And again, the public space is still oriented to the south. And that's how the building stacks in the planning. So I think that's the final slide and stop there. Matt, if you have any other additional comments before, or questions?
So before we open it up, ask, is there any staff comment or from local? Or we don't have the, does local?
Morning, Commissioner.
And also can you clarify, is the, is that, does that pedestrian bridge exist across, does the, was that part of the conceptual approval?
We, yeah, we are, we are, we're going to, we have to build that bridge. It does not exist today.
Say it again.
We are building, we are planning that bridge as part of our construction. It is, it does not exist today.
Okay. And was that part of the conceptual approval package? It was. Okay. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Nate Ball. I'm the neighborhood planner for the fun left side. I'll start with the designer view, motion for and comments from the designer committee. So this was presented two days ago on Wednesday at Far West Designer View for a conceptual approval. There was a lot of commentary on the building and massing itself. The pedestrian bridge across Lorraine needing to be, needing special attention. And then really the pedestrian experience along Lorraine Avenue being really important and needed, needing to be active. As, as it progresses, as well as the, uh, an extensive buffer from the residential area around it. Needing to be thought out more in future iterations. It was conceptually approved with no conditions. The vote was seven zero with one abstention. And so the plan is for them to come back in the new year for systematic review. In terms of staff, sort of staff report or feedback on the plan, I did just want to share sort of the timeline of how we got to this point and how we got to conceptual approval. Throughout 2023 and 24, the Cleveland Clinic held five community meetings along with West Park Camp Development Corporation. And really what came out of those meetings is sort of what you're seeing today in the conceptual form. There was a major emphasis at those meetings from the public on the impacts of, of traffic being funneled north into the neighborhood. Whereas it currently exists, the parking garage is south of Lorraine Avenue. So that is kind of shifting more into the residential neighborhood. The location of parking and the amount of surface lots was a big point in the community and the experience along Lorraine Avenue needs to be enhanced. There was also concern about the, the massing and height of the buildings as they are directly adjacent to residential, you know, properties in the residential neighborhood to the north. Earlier iterations of the project showed the massing of the new medical building at six stories and the garage at seven stories. So the current proposal is, does step down a little bit from what the earlier iteration was. In terms of other public meeting concerns, the, the treatment of green space where you're seeing on the slide here, that green buffer, those used to be residential properties that the client owned. Those have since been demolished. And I think there's going to be future ongoing conversations about how or what that future green space looks like. And then overall a concern about future expansions in the neighborhood that are not currently planned for or shown. In terms of staff feedback on the project, I, I did want to share that. I went back and researched our connecting Cleveland 2020 plan, which is our, our last citywide comprehensive plan. Our, our maps and data do show that Fairview Hospital is a institutional use in the neighborhood. And it's listed as a major asset to the neighborhood as well. And it's listed as a major asset to the neighborhood as well. Currently the zoning for the neighborhood does not match what the clinic's actual uses are. And then in terms of the street vacation along West one seventy-ninth and Eileen Avenue, uh, the clinic shared that they're, uh, considering making this a dead-end street to prevent cut-through traffic, uh, coming into the neighborhood as caregivers come in and out. The feedback we've heard has been pretty mixed from the neighborhood on this. I think it's something we're open to exploring further. We think it could be a good solution to prevent, um, you know, the, the caregivers and patients from going into the residential neighborhood and parking rather than just having to go to one designated parking area. Um, and then in terms of, you know, uh, the proposal itself, uh, we emphasized to the clinic early on that, uh, there's a need for active frontage on Lorraine Avenue. Um, and this proposal was to achieve that. Uh, we think that it could expand, uh, upwards to all floors instead of the first two floors, as well as extend further east of Old December in the parking garage from, uh, Rain Avenue. And in terms of the parking garage itself, we've also emphasized the desire for one or two stories of this to be buried underground if possible. I believe on Wednesday's meeting, uh, representatives stated that, uh, it's, it was determined to be not feasible to, uh, put that underground, but we'd like to see the feasibility report, uh, to make sure that that's not an option. And, um, you know, they, they've also stated that parking spaces, uh, will meet their current and future demand for parking on the campus and eliminate, uh, their need to currently shuttle, um, uh, caregivers from the I X center, uh, parking lots. So, um, that is a positive thing that they're meeting the current or the future, current and future demand for their campus. And then the landscaping and screening is another really big one. We, there is an expectation that they will further develop this using mature plantings that, uh, properly, uh, screen from the residential neighborhood. And just to wrap up here, uh, we are supportive of the concept. Fairview Hospital is a major asset to the neighborhood. We look forward to working with them to improve the proposal. We would request that the commission consider, uh, if they grant conceptual approval today, to have that, uh, condition be that the tra, the traffic study and the feasibility of the parking garage, uh, be provided to staff for our review. That's all I have, thank you.
The feasibility of the parking garage itself?
The feasibility of, um, it, uh, not being underground, so all being above ground.
Um, okay, thank you. Um, and, um, Chris members, okay, if, uh, I take any public comments before we ask anything, that's it. If anybody'd like to speak, just, um, raise your hand, say your name, you can come up, you can stay on whatever, you can stay there.
I can't stand, but thank you. Um, my name is Douglas Baird. I'm a property owner for over thirty years at the end of the cul-de-sac on one seventy-ninth street. And when I bought my house, West one seventy-nine had fifteen homes before Lorraine. Now they have one. And soon are to lose another, um, that the clinic acquired as they march ever forward. We, um, boarded the metro parks. So it's a, it's a beautiful view, but we're going to be in the shadow now. When I bought my house, it was a residential street. Now there's going to be a multi-story thousand-car parking garage. And there is one traffic light to get out of this whole enclave on one seventy-nine. They're funneling thousands of cars into this area going to put what will be hideous, uh, pedestrian bridge over Lorraine Avenue. We have helicopters landing, ambulances coming. Can we tolerate that? But they're essentially proposing to exclude all of their parking needs into a residential area. And I just think somebody needs to say, the concept, I understand, they just want to lay claim to that area. They buy a house and now tear it down. But we lived on the street where for ten years, they just let all the houses rot and fall apart. And now, I mean, I'm going to show you pictures. This is the quote-unquote landscaping we did with. And this is how the hospital maintained the homes on our street, letting them overgrow. And now they've taken all of these houses and demolished them. And all along Lorraine Avenue, this is our neighborhood experience, parking, parking, parking. Park. And now they just want more parking. This is the proposed site for their new garage. And you can see how close it is to our homes. And most of these parking lots sit empty all weekend long. And this is the view from my backyard of the Mall Campus Center. So you can see too, that whatever they build as a massive structure is going to greatly impact our property values and quality of life in our neighborhoods. So I would say while this is their want, it is not acceptable to just keep keeping all the CAMs partners for more and more parking. They don't want to build where they're tearing down their former garage because they want to keep their options open for future development of the hospital. When I asked them about it, they said, well, we kind of like the look of it being open. Well, their openness is exactly what we're losing by putting their parking garage onto the north side of the, of the campus. And then that pedestrian bridge over top, it's just going to be a congested nightmare. So I just want to make, make it known that I and my neighbors, most of whom aren't able to attend today, reject the entire concept. And we have let the hospital know that at all those meetings. And they just grin and say, but this is what we want. Well, this is what we don't. And I hope the city and the planning will tell them that they need to distribute nine hundred parking spots over several sites instead of funneling everything into a, a busy road. It's also the entrance to the city of Cleveland as you come across the Lorraine Avenue Bridge there from Fairview Park. And every time I've come to this commission for the expansions of the hospital, we have heard about their wonderful landscaping, green space, how they're going to enhance the streetscape, and none of it comes to bear. So I'm, I'm very pessimistic about the entire concept of this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online or here who wants to speak to this matter? All right, if you're online, you can just raise your hand and, um, David will let me know. Is there anybody else?
I, I think no hands are raised.
Okay. All right, we'll close. Oh, wait, Barbara.
And this one up from Barbara.
All right, Barbara, uh, are you here to speak to this matter?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, uh, can you say your name and address?
Barbara Haas, three seven zero six, West one seventy-ninth Street. I live right next door to Douglas and I, I echo all of his statements. I agree with him completely. He summed it up exactly how our whole neighborhood has been feeling. So thank you, uh, Douglas. And like I said, I agree with him completely. I'm very concerned about this whole project. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, um, so we'll close with a question and ask mission members.
Just wanted to introduce, there were three letters that were sent, um, that were two in support of what's, I mean, I'm sorry, two were against and then one was in support that had additional comments, uh, which all of them had been.
Is councilman?
I believe so, Nate, would you?
Um, I don't want to speak to the councilman. I mean, he's been at the community meetings. He's aware of the, the, um, the ongoing discussions between the clinic, the neighborhood, us, uh, West Park Camp development.
There's a candidate for David Robinson.
Say the name here.
David Robinson.
Uh, David Robinson, are you here to speak to this matter?
Hi folks, sorry about that. I'm just joining. Um, I heard that question about the councilman. My name is David Robinson. I'm the executive director of West Park Cam's Neighborhood Development. So I just wanted to add some additional comments on the process, if that's all right.
Sure.
Great, thanks. I'll keep it brief, um, but I did want to speak to, uh, some comments that I heard as I was joining the call. And my time with West Park Cam started relatively soon, so I haven't been able to shepherd this project from the initial phase when the community meetings began back in October of twenty twenty-three. Uh, my time started in May, but since then I did want to speak to the clinics. Really, you know, the clinic's ability to listen to community and really try to make concessions in the planning process with community input and feedback. My previous time before joining the West Park Cam's Neighborhood Development neighborhood was with University Circle Incorporated. During my almost nine years there, I got to see much clinic expansion take place. Um, and through that project, I've seen, you know, very positive community feedback. And I've seen, you know, community really, uh, have concerns about projects. And I've also seen, um, how projects have changed as they've gone through that community feedback, uh, portion of, uh, development. With that, I wanted to speak to, um, the clinic's reduction of the footprint size. And that I look at as one of the biggest, um, concessions the clinic has made in terms of the community concerns that have been raised. To be clear, this is not an expansion of services, rather that, rather a facility upgrade to existing service. And I want to say that and stress that to the planning commission only because this isn't bringing new staff or new patients into the facility. So in essence, the parking demand is already there and not met rather than a conversion that adds parking to a campus because more people are coming. This is really meeting the demand of the people already coming into that facility. As part of the reduction of the campus footprint, there is also a job reduction at the campus of Fairview. And some jobs will be leaving the clinic Fairview campus to go elsewhere. And so what that ultimately means is after this project is complete, less staff will be parking at the campus facility. Now we know right now they're being shuttled in, but to, to, you know, quell the concerns of some of those community members, in the long run, this, uh, project should reduce the amount of vehicles that are parking in the neighborhood and elsewhere, such as shopping plazas and things like that. Um, and so we're really actually quite proud of the concessions the clinic has made as they've gone through this project. Um, and we wanted to just voice our support for its continuation.
We're done with the question.
Then travel.
Okay.
I'll try and be brief. First of all, I empathize with you. I live here in Cleveland for the main campus. And I'm glad they're trying to communicate with community because that's not the case where I live. That's a next story of our time. Issue number one to the applicant, if you're going to present, um, plans and aerials, please make sure they're oriented in the same direction. Because what you force people to do is visualize what you're trying to communicate. This plan is oriented one way, but all the images of the aerials that you show are oriented another way. That's just for being clear, so people don't have to, um, use their imagination about what you're trying to communicate. I, I have concerns, um, I, I don't know if you guys considered this is, when you do a lot of large institutional improvements, the environmental impact, the sound, the dirt, the dust, it's going to be far greater than at the end of the day, trying to manage and massage how the ca, the campus is expanded. So I think, uh, I would be concerned about that as, as, as a community and, and make sure that they clean up every day because it doesn't happen around my house. And I, and I've been at my place for twenty-five years. The, the second thing is, um, I know the clinic's track record as it relates to pedestrian traffic and, and not accommodating how people really move to cities. Hospitals are insular and, and so their first objective is to get people in, not, not get people, um, to sort of recreate and communicate around. I think there's some opportunities there, especially along one hundred seventy-nine and that green space. You create like a fabulous public, um, access. So it's not just this buffer, but it's, it's an amenity that can be, be used by the community. Maybe that street's not shut down. Maybe you put some water tables there, make, make it a, a very respectful, um, access for folks to cross that street in, in a dignified way, but safely. The last thing more importantly, bridges don't promote pedestrian traffic on the street. People pull in, they get in their cars and they, and they traverse across the bridge. Which is a negative thing because what I've heard, I, what I've heard from staff is you want to create some, some pedestrian, um, activity there. You want to create street state space that's actually respects Lorraine because Lorraine's a beautiful street along the way. It, it changes as you go along, but I think there's opportunities. I'm not convinced that the clinic can pull it off because their lens is always about getting people in their building, parking and getting in. So I think we need to work really intently, really purposely, and really, um, um, hard to, to make that happen. And maybe create something that could be replicated along Lorraine. And lastly, more, more importantly, um, I, 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 my concern too is traffic. I think, um, I know there's some improvements going down into the park that are slated to alleviate how dangerous that path is. So possibly as they're looking at that path, you can look at this whole list and figure out how arteries and how people move, how cars move and how buses traverse through the site as well. Thank you.
For our dream.
Actually, I have a question. Uh, is he here? Can you go to slide twenty, please?
I don't think I have page numbers.
Oh, okay.
Just stop me when I'm getting.
Hey, John, the, the large aerial, the one that's the, uh, it's like that, that one.
This one?
The one, that.
Right there. Okay. Either to the staff or flesh to the applicant, the, the flat structure that is on the bottom left-hand corner, what is that currently? Do you know me?
That is, that's a, that's a parking garage. That's a legal one-story parking garage.
For the minute though.
Correct.
For the minute. And I believe it might have been in the gentleman's comments about former parking garage that is not being considered. Is it that one or is there another one?
It's that sort of half football.
Half man.
You see there, um, where the garage will be coming.
Gotcha, okay, gotcha, thank you. Okay, I was just trying to orient. So, uh, you know, I think I echo, I think I echo most of our, my colleagues' comments. It's, it's an interesting juxtaposition where we want to honor the neighborhood and it's, and it's the longevity of neighbors, like the gentleman that's here, present with us and those online, um, to not clog up their streets and sort of create an alternative for the patients of the institution while at the same time not continuing to be disruptive to the neighbors that have longevity in the neighborhood. And so I do have concerns with the proposed structure. I think, uh, to Nate's com, uh, recommendations as far as further examination of a parking study, whether there are multiple versus congregating into this one large structure. I think the, the traffic flow does seem to be a concern. Um, and not fully embedded and understood as it relates to what we don't know that people are planning to spend in due. And I think that is part of this concern where it's like, we know that there are parcels around this current structure that are being considered for something. We don't know what that something is. And so while I respect and honor that, um, the clinic was, or specifically this, this institution, Fairview was honored as, or recognized as an asset for the neighborhood in twenty twenty plan. We also know since twenty twenty, a lot has happened and there's a lot worth talking, right? And so I do, I do think that there is more work that needs to be done, uh, to not just recognize the need for alleviating the current demand, but really thinking about what are the long-term ramifications of. Um, but really thinking about what are the long-term ramifications of, for, for the neighborhood, or, you know, ultimately, what does it mean for this city?
Um, I'm not gonna repeat. Oh, go ahead Drew, you have something? Um, so I have a couple, uh, this is your per conceptual, so for the clinic votes and Matt, I think you wanna say something. I'm, I'm gonna actually ask a question. Um, we're here to give you feedback. You guys are gonna be back a couple times. Um, so I won't repeat what they said. Um, I, um, I think there's an opportunity when you, to, three things actually. When you look at Lorraine and where it knuckles and goes towards Rocky River. Um, I think that's an important moment. So, one, I think, uh, the parking garage itself needs to be wrapped at that corner if it's gonna be there. So that, uh, it actually is a, uh, it is the thing you see when you hit the knuckle. And I think you've only addressed the face towards the clinic, but not towards the community or people who are driving. So for me, that's a non-negotiable. Second, an opportunity actually to work with the community, um, and I know that this is, uh, you know, uh, the antithesis to parking. Um, I think the surface lot that the clinic owns there, the tiny one, ought to be a concession to remove it to build, if you're building this kind of parking. And have a more of a gateway for an experience there, um, and to put some significant, um, greening there, because then it is an enhancement. You hit the, you hit the corner, you hit the buckle, you don't just see a surface parking lot and the side of a garage. So there is a huge missed opportunity there to build something that could be actually, um, more beautiful than back of the house, which is what it is right now. And third, I do think we need to see, uh, why it's not feasible to put the bridge underground like he's done at Heeputin Ninety-third. Um, I think it, um, it, unless the utilities are worse here than they are on Euclid Avenue, which I doubt that they are. For those who live through the Euclid quarter, us included, we live in the Euclid quarter. It seems to me that, uh, this bridge ought to be an underground, um, connection. Um, and it, we ought to really, uh, we should encourage you to, um, to absolutely explore that. I know there's always a cost issue, but in this case, the, the, um, it, it's Lorraine Avenue, but it's not that wide. There's, it's not like crossing Euclid Avenue. Um, there, there should be a way to consider it. So, and, and, and you know, that we really need to see that, um, uh, when you come back. Um, I think that, um, this is a beautiful, uh, moment in the city, especially as you hit the, the reservation. So for me, that corner is a non-negotiable, um, of the, of the garage, as well as potentially removing that tiny surface lot, which isn't sufficient anyway. And that truly will enhance the community and create something that is actually thoughtful in terms of what that is, especially for the neighbors. Um, so those are my comments. Um, take them back with you. Ours should be in the record. Um, and then I'll ask Drew, because we haven't heard from him, if he has any additional comments.
I think, um, kind of echoing all the comments of the, my fellow commissioners had, I think in kind of, uh, the, the progress of this, if, if there's any additional thoughts to, again, the street realm. I think I can't really tell, and, and I'm not sure if I missed it, how close the new facility is adjacent to the street? Or what kind of, uh, street cape, streetscape enhancement is gonna be done, um, from the bridge to kind of the new, uh, extents of, of, of this, uh, development? But in the kind of future, uh, when they come back, um, if, if, if the, if the team can kind of present that with kind of a comprehensive understanding of how people will be traversing. Um, not only potentially underneath the bridge or, or, um, uh, back and forth, uh, across the bridge, um, just making sure that that's, that's studied well.
Um. We obviously are not gonna repeat all these things, um, and this is just conceptual approval. So I need a motion, uh, some regard. Uh, and this will be back. We're probably gonna need to see this three times.
Yeah. Manager, I'll take, make it a test. I need to approve the conceptual plan, as you said, with the caveat that we continue to work with the community and the neighbors adjacent. Come up with a, a meaningful plan, uh, that satisfies both, um, taking consideration staff comments and concerns. And also take seriously the comments that were made here on the commission, because I believe they have a lot of their own terms and planning. Doing a good plan. Thank you.
We have a motion, and they will get to the applicants all the comments, um, from each commission member, as well as through today, staff and community, so that they, they can respond to them. We will, I, I will request that we see those, a list of those comments the next time they're here, so we can remember them for schematic. I don't know if you could help us with that, and that we could have a response to each of them. So with the motions, thank you. The second, um, you call the roll.
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Carrie? Yes. Arjun?
Yes.
A motion carries. Thank you very, very much, and thank you for coming and representing your community.
Well, thank you. Wanted to make one comment to the folks from the clinic. We have to consider community engagement, community development as a form of healthcare. Because it creates a certain stress on the community that is, is, it's not tangible, but it's, it's an emotional thing. I think outcomes would be better if you consider that as, as not just space, not just lip service, but it's ingrained in your culture. Thank you.
Mr. Fluker, I very much appreciate those comments. Uh, we've, we've continued to try to, uh, do that and will continue to. We know that, uh, we'll, we'll be working with, um, you know, David Robinson and, and, uh, his team, as well as Councilman Slife. As we get into some of these, uh, comments and, and items that you're looking for, such as more, uh, more definition to what that buffer area is, et cetera. So as we come back, we expect, uh, to, to be able to show those with you and talk about the community engagement. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um, all right, next item is on Euclid Quarter, uh, where we, this we saw, we're receding this, for this case, western, we're delivering a free gateway fine. Um, uh, actually, I think we approved two of them, so we're just seeing the one on, uh, we are seeing the one on, uh, T L, or Tim Bigdale.
Yes.
Um, and, um, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but a truth, essential antipathy and perjury?
I do.
Hopefully we're seeing some grandiose rendering.
Uh, there are, there are more details, and I've never yet. So we, uh, we reordered and just focused on the comments from here.
Correct.
And so, um, I have a sample with me, if you wanted to see that, um, but we did update the renderings. I have the old and the new in this, so you can see them.
Did you take a sample while you talked?
Uh, it's, it's this slide.
That'd be great, man.
Sure.
This is all about, this is like.
Are you the first person to present?
A sample?
Oh, no. I'm excited.
So just. Now.
It's like breaking a brilliant one, yeah.
You know what? I'm gonna remember that.
Yes, and you want to put us on the inside, bring like.
We're just like, like, uh, they have a sample, so.
It's like first morning, you know.
I don't think we're gonna stop.
Yeah. So, um. So if you were, and actually, I don't, we wanna advance.
See that?
Yeah. This is the inside, so we're gonna advance the slides. And I will also say, it's still very different when there's no daylight in that directly. So, um, so, so this is, uh, the outside. This is a sample of probably the lightest section of blue, because it was a gradient on there, uh, that we got from the, and if you advance the next slide. Um, so this, this rendering is, uh, more accurate. And so you can see some reflections in there, and we munched up the mullions. If you go to the next slide, I believe it's the previous. So this is what we showed you.
Yes.
Okay, so you can go faster again. So that, uh, you know, we, uh, that will be more bigger than that first rendering, and your comments. And then we have the. I'm sure can.
This will be outside. I'm, I'm being honest, man. You be raised, you did the, then. Okay, that's a lot of whatever this is.
The windows are also.
And I, I have some photos, which I didn't have the last time, too, which are actually samples that are on the windows.
Oh, let's see that.
So if you're gonna advance, uh, so this is, this is also just a reminder that, um, that faces directly west, so it has the solar shade. So these are deployed about fifty percent of the time. This is what we're going to do next slide. So we just notice that. And that is a double curtain wall, so there's like a thirty-inch airspace in between there, and those live inside that space.
What surface will you be applying this fill?
This would be on the outside face. So there's some samples next. So this is the product data. It comes in eighty, twenty, seventy, thirty, sixty, forty, fifty, fifty. This is fifty-fifty. So this is the most open. Okay, so they come eighty percent closed, seventy, sixty, fifty. So if you go next slide, please, this is the sample. So we had samples made up of, those are our logo colors and some tertiary colors. And you can see, uh, it's left to right, uh, we had the heaviest one. The sixty, forty comes, they're both sixty, forty, but the, the openings, uh, are different sizes to what they come from. So there's sixty, forty A and B. So we were going with the most open. You can see the reflectivity showing through there on that. So some of those blues that you see on there are the same blues that are on that.
There's the colors on this stuff, right? It's simply white.
It, it is multiple blue, correct. The blue is, um, intended to go from a lighter blue, and it fades, you know, to black, so that it fades into the glass, no film. On the outside. So, so we'll, we'll go back to that render, you know, next slide. This was just to show you from the inside, but you know, you were like, oh, that looks a little harsh, but you can see that one on the left is the fifty-fifty. You know, that you can see, really, you can see the trains and the buildings and everything beyond.
Is that one held up somewhere in the picture, the sample?
No, I just got this. I had, I had to order this. These are still in place at T B U C. Um, let's see, what else are we having in the slides here? Where, those are just our, our, our branded blue colors. They are rendered not quite right on this, here. And then the, the remaining slides are ones you can see previously.
Yeah, just for, just for my identification.
Yeah.
What happens if you run it on the inside?
Um, well, I think if it goes on the inside, when the shades are deployed, we won't see it at all, right? Because we're back to the back.
It doesn't work on the inside. Unfortunately, the Cleveland Foundation did this on our, with the top, the whiteness, it's clean, but you can't see it in the day, you can't see it at night. And it's on the inside. We're not gonna fix it. It's, it doesn't work.
Right.
But, you know, go back to the rendering and show us the fade out.
That one there.
This one.
Yeah.
So it gets darker and darker, and so when it gets to that line, it'll, it'll be the same color as the glass.
As, as best, as best as we can. If you, can you go back to one more?
That, that looks a lot better. I mean, it really does look a lot, a lot better.
Okay, well, thanks.
I like that.
I, I had one of my team members do that. We, we went over repeatedly, so.
Yeah.
Um, so there is a slight bend in the building there. You can see in that aerial beyond the left.
Yeah.
Right, so we're sort of using the architecture at that point. And also at that point, it's really faint, but there is a small canopy projection that starts at that inch point and projects out. You can see the previous faint layout on that, so that's that horizontal gray line there.
I actually think it looks great like this. I, I do. And I think before it just scared us. It looked like a billboard. And so I think this really, I think it's gonna integrate, but still be effective at the same time, so.
That's what I thought it would happen.
Why?
So why did you wanna pass?
So I appreciate the, I appreciated your comments, right? We, we, we could have done better, and I'm glad we got a chance to come back and, and do better.
Did it change anything? Did we get, did you go to fifty-fifty because of this conversation, or were you?
No, that was our, that was our, that was our plan. I think we just, we, we didn't convey to you the level of thought that went into it, I think, and the detail and the samples and things like that. I didn't have the, uh, photos of samples that were in, you know, I've had, uh, a lot of people, again, within our organization primarily, look at it. Um, to get to that point where we, where we will recommend, but I just didn't convey that, and we don't, which I should have.
The devon and the. Well, metal chair and, and the cameras for this.
There you have.
Uh.
Where is the?
Okay, it, it's.
One move, so it's, to approve, um, the screen, it's what's reserved, as presented.
Okay. Motion on a second, um, before I call the roll. I'm like, thank you. I know we added a little time cost to you guys, but, um, uh, it's, for me, the North Greenway is one of the most amazing, exceptional routes. And, um, and I actually think now, like, show this, like, that, hear me, but I actually think it's gonna be an enhancement. Um, really an enhancement to the, the way you show it, because I think it's also been a soften in a beautiful way when you have to have those solar shades down. And.
And to start.
It's so stark, and we were worried to be stark blue, but now I think it's actually going to help, in terms of this kind of integrated experience when you're walking up and down the North Greenway. So I thank you, and, uh, we'll follow along. Stand please.
Yes.
Fluker?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, thank you. Um, Erica just went to the restroom, so, um, we'll hold on one second to get that far out. Let's see what's next here.
You might have a towel, you can be seen there for it. Well, you're served lunch.
I'll say that, um, we are taking on the agenda of the next item. Uh, it is actually not required to go through sign review, um, and so, uh, that is, uh, it is a demolition. It's actually not a sign review district, as we talked to them before, so we are not going to clear that one. Uh, we are going to, uh. Uh, we have some for information and administrative approval, but why are somebody giving them that?
Probably for rent.
The mandatory referral?
Mandatory referrals are, are here.
The informational ones.
Where is that, where is the mandatory referral? Okay.
Um.
We can probably get zoning.
Where, well, the zoning is for information only.
Right. Really? I mean, no.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm all for it.
Take care.
When Erica gets back, we'll do mandatory referrals, um, and administrative approval. And that's all we have. That's everything else for information. So we'll do transformative arts fun. Is anyone here for the Lorraine Avenue Resettling? Correct, I shall. Then we're not gonna do that one today. Um, so, um, wow, welcome. Thanks for sitting here. All right, so first item is a mandatory referral is ordinance one, three, two, 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 zero, two, four. Um, this is authorized the mayor and commissioner of purchases and supplies to acquire property from Gustav Molnar located at one, two, one, six, west sixty-six, six, west sixty-fifth street for future develop, redevelopment. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm Mikael, Mikael John-Bertis, Burton Mocap, um, the Division of Real Estate. Can I have Mr. Molnar here with me?
Good morning.
So ordinance number one, three, two, two, twenty, twenty-four. Um, we are requesting and asking, um, for the mayor and the commissioner of purchases and supplies to acquire property from, uh, Mr. Molnar. Located at one, two, one, six, west sixty-fifth street for future redevelopment, to consolidate that property with an adjacent vacant city-owned property to convey, um, the consolidated property back to Mr. Molnar. And enter into a purchase agreement between the city and Molnar for future redevelopment. So, um, as you see on the map here, we have two parcels, one owned by the city, another one that's adjacent to, uh, Mr. Molnar's property. Um, and this property that we have, it's no longer really needed by the city, but, um, we've got it appraised. And we've negotiated and spoken with Smolnik. He wants to develop, uh, four townhomes on it. And so in order to do this, um, we are going to acquire Mr. Molnar's property that, and then consolidate it. And then add a deed restriction to make sure that development happens, and it follows all of the, uh, city planning and, um, city guidelines.
The rationale for acquiring it and then giving it back is just to be able to have some control over the city on parcel that you're.
Correct, because worst-case scenario, if.
Don't develop it.
It doesn't develop, we don't wanna have, uh, something that's not buildable.
Correct.
Um, right now, our parcel, we could probably build one, one townhome on it. But with this consolidation, we'll be able to have four townhouses, and then the next slide kind of shows you what his, oh, that just shows you what it looks like right now. But after that, the next slide kind of shows you what he's planning to build, planning to build, uh, four townhomes, um, create some great economic development for the city, create more homeowners and taxes.
Beautiful, Tommy.
Well, manager, I'm going to approve orders of one, three, two, two, and three, four, line via purchasing, um, of said property.
Well, manager, I move to approve ordinance number one three two two four 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 line via purchasing um of said property.
Second. Motion on a second. Call the roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Luker?
Yes.
Yeah. Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. What's on board in beautiful design?
I bought it myself, yeah.
Are you living there? Gonna live there?
I can live there, but I don't have the means to do this.
All right, next item is a resolution one three five four two zero two four. This is um declaring the intent to vacate a portion of West Boulevard. Hello, great.
Oh, my Christmas card.
It's early present. So.
Yes.
Thank you. Good morning to everybody. Uh this is the intent to vacate for some West Boulevard. Uh this question on West Boulevard is there because West Boulevard, once upon a time, got to be located. And now this is the remnants of the runway that if you drive by, you'd never know if it's right there at that point. So we'll go to the next slide. The orange portion is what we've been speaking of, the portion that we want to vacate. You have the Bell Rex Center uh right next to it and then there's uh there's salsa schools on the other side of it. So once this is vacated there, if we'll to the next slide, please. It's pretty to be a park. So the intent is to vacate it all so that it has more and more will be a park area for folks to use.
How and that how that site's owned by?
It's uh C M S D has a small portion of budding bed that we're in conversation with them so that they will go there, claim to the property. So they'll be from one property.
It'll all be city control.
Yes.
And will it be um this whole thing be zone? That's parkland?
That's my understanding of the intent for this.
Okay.
And sure, I move to approve mandatory for for thirteen fifty four twenty twenty four is presented.
Second. Motion on a second. Call the roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Luker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yeah.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Are you up for the next one? No. Uh the last one is thirteen twenty two zero two four. This is to amend the title and section ordinance five six four two zero two four, which was passed in May of twenty twenty four, authorizing the director of capital project importance control to enter into one or more contracts for the details, design and construction of early of the early implementation for the Cleveland Harbor Eastern Embankment Resilient Strategy Project. I must have missed that. Look at that open call. Uh who's gonna present this? Well, I'm excited because I I missed the debate. So let's see what it was.
Hello.
Hello, good morning.
Morning. Uh represent inner city yacht club. Um we we sit right in the uh middle of the project and uh we have uh uh been in 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 uh uh in the neighborhood since nineteen sixty eight. We are the only prominent uh black yacht club in 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 the state of Ohio that sits on its own body in the water. Um we have uh been a an important part of the neighborhood's history since our inception, uh which was a a fight to to begin with. Um because this project happens within our uh our backyard, so to say, and our front yard, we show support for it. Um uh we lease our land from Metropark, uh we we lease our land from uh from Cleveland Metroparks. Um which in turn, we see the land from the state of Ohio in two thousand. I might be running a little fast here with the slide, but I don't take a lot of your time. Um we have a master plan that we want to uh implement that will not only provide access to the uh youth and the members of our community with since we since we are uh uh front, uh forefront for bowling in the black community. Uh at our marina, we design uh updates, infrastructure and stuff like that. It's it's much needed since since uh since our inception. Um East seventy second street, where the boat launch ramps are, there's only two places to launch boats and that is right there. And uh Edward, uh you have Wildwood, but a major boat will be there. The majority of 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 uh African Americans or minorities launch their boats from that uh launch ramp, which is right, launch a lot to be right on the way. They're really, bowling recreation has not been for minorities in in the in the past. We we pride ourselves on showing that yes, it can be and it will be. With the help of the Metropark, we have been able to uh show that and continue to show that and we wish to continue to do that. Um Metro Park has helped us uh with some infrastructure work. It has Councilman Harrison has helped us. Uh redesign some of the can dots and in turn that gives us a breadth of light to continue to serve the community that we that we that we've been in nineteen sixty eight. Um Metro Park gave us fifty thousand dollars. Um Councilman Harrison uh allocated uh funds for us to help. If we can go out to the end, if you like, where we we showed some of our dock that has been in disarray uh due to wave action, uh weather. Um this showed the storm that just passed uh actually took the move off our dock. Um we suffered a catastrophic losses. Through the help of the Metro Park, they're helping us with our insurance. They're they're being the lion in our backs, I say. And then and Councilman Harrison as well, his he sees the importance of our existence. He sees the importance of uh of what we bring to the community, um the future generation of bowlers. We we feel that 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 uh upgrades are needed. We feel that our existence is needed. We have a structure on our property that is the first black contractor job in the city, please. Very first one. It's on our property. Metro Park is helping us with with putting a start to market. This is what we like to have there to to recognize that. Um we want to continue to work with the Metro Park Council and Harrison to help uh keep our footprint or just to solidify our future. Uh I believe in that slide you can see would be what the what the uh help from the Metro Park has done for us before and after. And 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 that generates, we we want to encourage minority voters, we want to encourage them to come now, connect with the lake. But that's something that we simply don't have. Um that is an additional uh dock. We, the Metro Park helped us with a, I don't know if anybody can remember a pump out. Put your boats, you know, collect waste, you go have it pumped out. We have, we we're now looking to install a a dock so that we come to the dock, the plumbing. And like I said, a lot of bowlers launch from that ramp, come to the docks, get their boats, boats pumped out. Um just just open ourselves to the community, make ourselves more known and look forward to having future uh connections with them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Um first of all, this is for now. Um and um uh so how do you know how long the lease should be out with the Metro Park?
Our lease is currently.
Like a hundred years?
No.
I was gonna extend it.
I wish. I believe Metro Park has a lease with the state. Our lease is up for review in twenty twenty seven. And we are very much concerned and we would like to make sure that uh we can extend our lease with the Metro Park to solidify our future uh with us being the only uh minority yacht club. So it's it's important to us to 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 work with Metro Park as they have been working with us to to stay on course, let's say. To make sure that we are in existence for years, year and generation.
We encourage that. So we can say that that question came up with the planning and the shooting. I mean, to make this, that's one of the should also really extend that sooner just because so you can actually go after more dollars or be able to invest. I mean, uh because I think that just the fore and afters are are. The technical question, will the direct, will capital projects in the city or the metro parks do all these enhancements for you? Who's building? Um is it Metro Park or?
So the metro parks, uh the contractors that we find of course have to be approved by uh the metro parks. Uh the metro parks will not physically.
We do it. You time it. They approve it. This is really a guy. That's I just wondered. Capital project. And then, and this is for my own curiosity. In addition to these improvements, what are some of the other major things that you need?
So our next one, infrastructure. Now, we have been to the of of uh 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 seawall, which is the retaining, is failing. Uh that's a major capital improvement. Um we have a uh, well, the vision, actually. I'm sorry, I might have slipped through that. We have a vision of of a of a new possibility, bringing the re- um recycle dots, recycle boats, uh uh solar lights, uh the whole, we 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 have been to be in one of the most cutneyed areas. Um and 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 we wanna say, we want to say, how to be, how to be, we want, we wanna be a model.
All right, does that know, does Cheers mastermind affect them?
Are you on Washington or she's on?
Yeah, I'm not sure. Brian is on.
Me jumping?
Yes. Oh, perfect. And their lease.
Yeah, in perpetuity.
I'm not a lawyer. Um Brian and I are here from Houston. My name's Kristin. Um Cheers is like adjacent to it, like right adjacent to it. So the Cheers, when Cheers is all said and done, no, it's not taking any of of the of I Y C's land or anything, but I Y C's been a stakeholder in the Cheers planning process for obvious reasons. And it's an awesome, but we're working with that. So it's adjacent. No, we're not taking any of their lands. Um but no, we're not building anything there as part of Cheers either. So none of these improvements are um these are like, what do you want to say, adjacent to Cheers and add on to Cheers.
Part of that makes sense.
Very good.
No, thank you. And that's a good answer.
Yeah.
Which is sort of for technicals and that's one. Um obviously in the planning, I think thinking about the visibility of this in the overall idea that the, when Cheers is all said and done, both the inner city yacht club and everything that's built will be bigger than Edward Park in some way, a whole collection, right?
It will be, yeah.
So um what the idea of what the visibility and the planning and both when it's all said and done is probably something that you guys can think through together. Anyway, so.
I I was just gonna say, this is gonna help enforce the connection back to the community.
Uh huh.
Because, you know, to your point, as an African American, we have a relationship with water. For a lot of reasons, we go into that with all of that. So I think it's vitally important that these are worked together and we find funding to help bring this along. Because if we don't, then we're missing a great opportunity.
Oh, yeah, we definitely agree with that. And I think the Cheers process has done a tremendous job, maybe I'm biased, but has done a tremendous job of doing community outreach. So, you know, it started back in twenty twenty during COVID, but outdoor walkshops itself to really get the neighborhood invested in Cheers. Since then, it's been over two thousand folks that have been engaged with the Cheers planning process, really working with the state there, superior I Y C. Uh black environmental leaders has taken the outreach. So we've done tons of community meetings, public open houses, online surveys. I don't know, help me, Ryan, am I missing anything else? It's been the community engagement has really been a backbone. And that's why I let environmental cares on the work.
We have one more inquiry.
Yeah.
Um about the lease. I think it's important because this organization is trying to raise funds. They, when they're at risk, then that compromises their ability to move forward, their implementation of anything.
Yeah.
Let's say, with my my opinion, I'm sorry.
We've been, we've been working with I Y C. Oh, sorry, crap. Um we've been working with I Y C to try to get funds. So we worked with them on a pump out grant to get um a new pump out station there. And we've done signs, the logos for them and a lot of the D S A D and tree work, trees too. So we've been trying to invest as much as we can.
How long was this current terminated coming?
Who, I don't know.
It is, it was signed in thirteen.
Uh ten, probably fourteen, fifteen.
We wanna, we trying to strive for a thirty year. If we choose to uh take a loan, you know, most long of thirty year, you know? We wanna go, we actually don't wanna go for long, please possible. We we don't wanna be, with all this construction and 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 what's happening around us, we don't wanna be the highest order. We wanna be part of this redevelopment that's happening around. We wanna be significant.
I think you have to consider this is place keeping.
Mm hmm.
We lose the only ethnic group in that club in Ohio, that would be tragic.
Well, that's why we're here. That's why we're here with Tom and Adam right now. We've been reported and again, you know, it's adjacent to and part of the Cheers project, but we're not taking any land this.
Well, I'm not saying I'm taking land. I'm talking about putting, assisting and and empowering and this organization so that they can do for themselves. And 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 the help of any organization starts with where they're not, they're gonna be where they are.
For sure.
Um and I don't know if you're five oh one C three, this could particularly open up private funding, but that's a whole other conversation, but that's a strategy that could be deployed. That's all I'm simply talking about. Yeah.
Uh yeah.
Just a a quick um question to the applicant. So I understand, and and I think also putting off my share, figure. What is your appropriation status?
We are now, right now, we're five oh one C seven. We have plans on starting inner city yacht foundation, which we hope to be a five oh one C. That will open the door. We we wanna, we don't want any kids stand outside that fence and say, I could never do that. We wanna be in, it's a shortage of both of that. It's a shortage of 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 black bowlers. We want to be the ones say, hey, come here. I know they said you can't do it. Know they said you're not entitled to it. Guess what? No, there you go.
Well, my. So long as um discussion in a good way of a mandatory referral.
No.
Right, so too.
That's great.
Anyway, um manager, I move to approve ordinance number thirteen twenty 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 four, align director of capital projects to enter into one or more contracts with detailed design and or construction.
Second. Motion on a second. Um I think you can hear how excited we are for you uh and actually how we stand, as well. Call the roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Luker?
Yes.
Curry?
Yes.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Thanks for coming. I'm so glad we have a forum. Uh with one administrative approval, can I have a motion for that one?
Manager, I move that we approve it's number one three four nine, yeah, to two thousand twenty four.
Second.
Motion on a second. Um call the roll. Anthony?
Yes.
Luther?
Yes.
Curry?
Yeah.
Sergeant?
Yes.
Uh motion carries. Uh so um last on the agenda is for information only. It's a transformative arts fund. Uh and before we invite the amazing Rhonda Brown to present uh today, um I do wanna just ask a question. Um the next meeting is January third. It's part of a holiday week. Do we have a forum um at least online or here for that? Um or is anyone here? Uh you'll be here? I'll be here, I'll be here. Um we'll talk to the councilman. Drew, are you available on the third? You must have stepped off. Um okay, go ahead. We'll find out. We probably need to do a really good, a really good chat on who's gonna attend. Holiday. I might need uh Mr. Luker to chair. I'll be in Doug here, but I can be on. I'll be on mine. Uh to share the name of the next. Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? Um my name is Rhonda Brown. I'm the senior strategist for arts, culture and creative economy. Um I'm honored to present to the city planning commission today um at the invitation of interim director, Marka Fields, uh to share the impact and significance of the transformative arts fund. Um as a commission, you play a pivotal role in this work in shaping Cleveland's public spaces and this. and this this fund directly intersects with your mission of fostering vibrant, inclusive and culturally rich environments. Um, thank you. Um, the transformative arts fund is a cross-sector community placemaking initiative. Um, it unites six civic leaders, government officials, artists and creative practitioners in a collaborative effort to allocate three million dollars for artist-led projects in the public domain. I do want to recognize uh, our past director, Joyce Panwen, uh, for her incredible work on this effort. Um, she introduced legislation and entrusted me with this work, uh, which I started in July of twenty twenty three. Her leadership and vision are foundational to this work. Um, I also want to thank again, um, Martha Fields for asking me to be here today. Um, there is a whole constellation of people that helped to shape this work. Of course, Mayor Bibb, uh, President Council, Council President Griffin, Councilman Conwell. Um, they mobil mobilize a diverse group of stakeholders to tran chan champion this initiative. Um, the transformative arts fund committee really shaped and guided this program focusing on artist-centric results. Um, and I just want to quickly list out their names. Gwen Garth, Gina Washington, Latisha Lopez, Vince Robinson, Deirdre McPherson, Maya Curtis, William Washington, and Tara Petrus was a staff member, um, who supported uh, the work. It's really fantastic. Assembly for the Arts under the leadership of Jeremy Johnson, um, was also really pivotal in this work. And Land Studio, um, is our our technical partner that continues to support our work. Um, Assembly is currently serving as the fiduciary of the funds. They hold all the dollars that are being dispersed to the institutional partners that are dispersing the funds for each of the projects. Um, so your commission plays a key role, a will pay key role in approving many of these public funded projects under TAF. I believe someone came uh, to the design commission, um, within the last two weeks, um, ensuring that they align with city planning priorities and community development goals. I'm not asking for favor, but I'm just wanting to know that, you know, that it's very important that you are aware of the projects and um, that uh, that you welcome the artists with open arms. I'm sure you, I know you will. Uh, next slide, please. So, um, this artist-centered legislation was made possible through historic funding, um, five hundred and twelve million dollars was allocated through the America Rescue Plan Act funding. Uh, city.
Five hundred and twelve million?
Yes, total, total, the city got five hundred and twelve million, sorry.
Don't you wish?
Don't I wish, yes. Um, to address uh, the continued recovery of the city of Cleveland from COVID, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic. And these three million dollars that were allocated uh, for um, for city of Cleveland, uh, prioritize artist advocacy advocacy and support, strengthening community engagement through the public, through public art. And this image is in city council on uh, floor two. It was one of our uh, first important milestones securing legislative amendments to place artists at the forefront of um, the fund administration and a step that aligns, um, you know, your efforts to empower local talent and ensure projects resonate with Cleveland communities. The next slide. So our team executed this work through the creation of an important vision statement, which really guided how we looked at all of the projects. And I'm just gonna read that statement for you briefly. Um, arts transcends boundaries, inspires social change and fosters unity. It builds bridges across diverse communities, fostering empathy and understanding. So our key achievements over this nine-month period, um, we conduct, in conducted extensive outreach, having a hundred and three eligible applicants. And there was a ton of engagement, um, prior to the hundred and three applicant applicants. Uh, we opened our um, our, our applications January of of twenty twenty three. Um, so hundred and three applicants, sixty seven under wet review, they were eligible. Um, twenty three finalists advanced and seven transformative arts funds uh, projects were awarded uh, with brands arranged ranging from three hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And just keep in mind, the dollars, the legislation, um, stated that the money had to go to an institutional partner. And so it was really important for us to go to city council to explain why it was important to um, create a process that was artist-centric, I mentioned that before, so that the artists could not have to wait to get paid, like many of our city projects, after the work is done, that we were able to work with Assembly for the Arts. And Assembly was able to deploy those dollars to the institutional partner with an approved budget. Um, and we're doing it over a certain period of time and we're monitoring their funds on a quarterly basis to ensure that the dollars are being spent as according to budget and um, are in alignment with the overall plan. Um, so um, with that, I would love to share um, a little bit about the seven projects. Um, beyond creating art, these projects empower artists to navigate city systems, uh, fostering knowledge and transferring, trans, uh, a knowledge transfer collaboration with departments like yours. Um, this integration strengthens the relationship between public art and urban planning, benefiting all Clevelanders. So really, I'm really very excited about that. And I think that was one of the things the mayor really wanted, um, as a result of my being here working for the city as this uh, senior strategist for arts, culture and creative economy. So, the, there are seven projects. The first project is a project called the Portals of Knowing. Um, the um, institutional partner is the Cuyahoga Metropolitan Housing Authority, and they are partnering with Latisha Delores Wilson Stone. The project is in the central community in the Fairfax area. Um, and it's an immersive theater project. Uh, so this project is um, at East Tech. And it is helping families from both the Metropolitan Housing Authority and the school uh, to develop um, a, a story through um, their own personal stories and create an immersive um, and transformative experience that will impact the entire community. Um, and again, it's really important to think about the, the range of projects are all very diverse. I think a lot of people thought that we were spending three million dollars on murals, which we could have done, but we were, you know, had the opportunity to really develop and um, fund projects that were, that are incredibly first. Uh, the next slide is a project called um, ninety four thirteen Sophia Avenue, a choreographed deconstruction and performance, performed maintenance of a built environment. So Melina Pergoli has an architecture background, but she's not really interested in um, building structures. She's really interested in thinking about the built environment and how it interacts with the overall systems that we um, occupy. And so she selected a building on the southeast side, um, which is owned by the county. It's already been deconstructed through this choreographed, you know, space that she's created with her institutional partner. And they are um, taking and cleaning the materials from the home and building mycelium from that, from, from the materials from the hall. Um, they're doing community engagement and with that community engagement, they will determine whether they create a cigarette, uh, a playground or a maze. And it's really exciting that there's a environmental justice team on the south side, southeast side, that's working with them and all sorts of partners in the community that are educating folks through this kind of artistic practice about um, about environmental justice in the arts. Next slide, please. All My Babies, oh, and so, I'm sorry, their uh, partner is Red House Studio, which is a small architecture firm here in Cleveland. Um, All My Baby's Birthday, the Afro Future is, um, their part, institutional partner is the Cleveland Clinic. Um, Jamila Ramon is creating interdisciplinary arts project that is addressing health outcomes for black mothers, um, through artistic experiences. This project is in the Fairfax area. And as you all probably know, um, the data that has been impacting our city, uh, our maternal fetal health outcomes are very poor. And so this is a really interesting opportunity to address, um, you know, or think through some of these issues and impacting various audiences, community health workers, um, doctors, doulas and mothers are all going to be part of this, these um, activations that are happening over the next eight months. Next slide is For Art's Sake, Kumar Aurora is working with Campus District. And this is a collective of artists that are bringing together um, youth and young adult-focused arts activations and emerging creators to um, impact and develop and enhance Cleveland's creator economy. Um, and these projects are really designed to beautify or highlight across the community in a lot of different spaces throughout the entire city of Cleveland. So they're doing a basketball court, they, they, they added the artistic component to Futureland, something that we've been wanting to do for a long time, but didn't have the funding to do. Um, they're doing a chess um, engagement with Stephen Kwan and and working with artists to create those chess, um, those chess boards. There are so many things happening to uh, um, develop um, this really interesting creative economy project. Their next uh, engagement will be here at City Hall. Um, they're doing a uh, exhibition and installation called Artists From the Streets, and that will be opening February sixth. The next project is slide ten. Yes. Um, it is called For Those That Call Here Home, Transforming Asian Town with an Outdoor Community Space. Jordan Wong is the in the, the lead artist. And Jordan is working with the Sculpture Center to develop and celebrate, inspire, to create, do a placemaking project um, at Thirty Ninth and Payne, which is the lot directly across from the old Davis.
Davis.
Dave supermarkets. Um, it's in the Midtown Community, Midtown uh, CDC is a partner on this project. Um, and they are transforming that uh, square, the square dancing lot where um, there's a group of women that are doing the dupe dance into a space that will celebrate and engage uh, the community and serve kind of as an entrance. And there's all sorts of challenges and issues with all of these projects, as you might imagine. Um, and uh, I don't mean to say that with this one, but you know, they've been thinking a lot about ways in which to leverage some of the other capital improvements that are happening in that area to, you know, expand and enhance um, that uh, that project.
Permanent, sorry to interrupt you, because there are developments for Nathan a lot, is it permanent or temporary in storage?
Well, that's exactly what the challenges are. There are, there are, there is some opportunity to make it permanent if perhaps the owner will donate to Midtown and then a lot, there's lots of things going on.
I understand, because I know we're both fine.
Yes, good.
I just.
Yes. So that project may have those pieces installed in a different space at first because of some of those challenges. Yeah.
Actually, sorry to cut you off.
No.
I believe there's also of a penalty change in this.
There is.
Occurring in. Occurring in.
That's right, that's right. Okay. Street, street repaid, repaid, yes.
Well, I always like to think of it as streetscape, but I know the engineers, it's not here.
The next slide is in part two one six, breathing creativity into community. Robin Robinson was selected, um, and the, their institutional partner's ingenuity. Uh, and what's really exciting and interesting about this project, which we're still working on, whether this project will be six uh, standalone murals in these uh, six different communities that have been listed here or one set of clustered murals in one particular community. Um, all worked on by six teams of artists paired with a, a um, a mural painter that's already done the work, that is providing or imparting their knowledge to emerging mural, um, muralists. Um, and at the completion and throughout the process of these murals being created, there will be a simultaneous trap of um, young adults that are um, educated on how to plan and develop wide-scale events um, so that they can have that as part of their resume building experiences, creating a reveal for all of these um, these murals uh, that will occur in the, at the completion of the um, process. And the final project is um, Art Garden, which is, the artist is Ariel. Um, the institutional partner is Metro West Community Development Center. The community is Clark Bolton. And Ariel is uh, building a vibrant art district on Store Avenue. Um, Councilwoman Jasmine Santana is very engaged in this work and also investing dollars to support the, the transformation in streetscaping um, and placemaking of Store Avenue. There will be large-scale murals and large-scale sculptures installed uh, in, in and around streets, transformational. Uh, this initiative represents a transformation, transformative approach to public art, fostering partnerships between artists, planners and the broader community. Through TAF, we are shaping a new landscape, Cleveland's art and culture engagement, one that celebrates diversity, powers creators and enhances public spaces. Your collaboration is vital in ensuring these projects do not only artistically inspiring, but also align with unique Cleveland's planning goals and community aspirations. Thank you.
You know, I am so happy yet that it's, artists are leading.
Yeah.
Because, and 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 this is just, I, it's, and also, tired of, you know, because oftentimes when we see we have public investment, and then we say, oh, there's an art component, but then they're not even at the table. And they say, oh, here's a wall over here, little fence over there. It's, I think, you know, this is beginning to change, begins to change that paradigm. They're like, this should, you all should be at the table. This should help with Florence, that space, Florence, Florence, and this streetscape to a point where we have another lens, an outcome, be better, right? Personally, I, I really like them.
Yeah. Creative fan. Congratulations to all of my, I mean, it's very, it's all. Um, I'm on Midtown's board, I actually just went off, but it's my last conversation. I know, trying to make sure, uh, Dave's market, I think it's the comments about, you know, other, other activities that are occurring in that neighborhood. Um, so grateful that we have this now, but I think it's a community as it relates to identity um, and just having a sense of belonging for all of these neighborhoods and all the artists that are participating in this, this particular show, I think, really speaks to um, how we can be not just creative, but also realistically creative community. Um, and as someone that is also doing creative activism from a voting standpoint, um, it can be one of my parts is to see the ingenuity of how uh, we're respecting creatives and artists in a way that is more.
Thank you. Interesting, you said the word, it's gonna sound totally off the law, but the, I saw something about the concept of applying the idea that fitting in is actually the opposite of belonging to a tenant. So it's something that we know and other people, when they actually apply it to city planning, architecture, this idea that we're always asked to think about content, fitting in point of view as opposed to a belonging point of view. And in life, I'm always never, never think about that concept, whether it's to artwork, to kind of city development. And so this brings up this idea of maybe a very different shift to, to work in city. Um, because we're trained, those of us that are architects and planners, right? We're actually trained in some ways in the wrong way.
We're actually trained in some ways in the wrong way. Because we're told everything we do hasn't been in, everything we do has to be in the text, and it does. But not, not in a way when you really get down to the, like, who are included, who's leading, what's belonging. Stories are told, gets to decide what stories are told, like all that stuff, so.
I mean, I think going back, August here comments on our previous, that I, I think we talked about today how. That's a whole other conversation we can have over lunch, with just the overall health. Right? And we all play a role in that, right? And I do things to, to our share. A lot of our disciplines did not, you know, have this kind of orientation, you know, even just in there. And so thinking about that, thinking about what does it mean to others versus actually purposely, you know, put practices and policies in place that do allow belonging, agency, autonomy. It is, it's a culture shift, sort of thing, so.
What's next for you? Can we put gigantic, amazing things to wait?
We're going to the moon.
Are you gonna go like the Dallas Art Fair next?
That's an interesting question. So I by no means want to position this work like it's over, right? This is kind of, this is getting these artists and institutions across the finish line represents way more work than I, I think any of us imagined, right? There's a lot of work to do. So, you know, we are all supporting these artists who are building and, and developing muscle to think about some of the things that are very, you know, rote and come to you all the time. It's, it's a challenge. So, you know, finalizing, you know, simultaneously that's happening is finalizing the strategy with Jennifer Coleman, who has been a tremendous.
No conflict here.
No conflict here. Advocate and thought partner in all of the things that I'm doing. And my role ends in July and I'm told I'm in the budget already for a continued job here in the city as supervisor. So I'm very excited.
Another thing to shake or figuring out how this is funded.
July.
I'm glad you all figured out how to fund the artists. I know in the private, being in the private sector, are harder than giving money from the city of Cleveland.
Yeah.
It's just a process, right?
Yeah, it was a process. And I will tell you that going to the table, my first time going to the city council table. And I prepared really well. And I had a, a summary that I gave to the council members to read, but it's very like easy and clear and they got it. And I think now sadly they're asking for these summaries from everybody. So, but it was, it was very helpful, I think, with their understanding too. And they said, absolutely, like, this, there's no way that artists should have to pay in advance for these, to front these expenses. So that, just giving them that understanding of, of, of how cities fully engage is just, with, with arts and culture and individuals. Has to be a lot, there always has to be a, a, an in-between. And there always has to be funding for that in-between because it's not free for them to do that work. So we did have to take a little sliver of that to provide administrative dollars to separately. So we just need to think about those things too when we're, we're allocating these bigger chunks.
Well, we don't have much of a vote on this. But thank you and we'll see more updates as you go. And to everyone here, end of the year, happy holidays. Hopefully, this incredible staff, you included, you two get some time off. Some rest and relaxation. And we thank you for a great year.
There's one more thing? Yes, Xavier has let me know that there is season online for rezoning and I leave the two people in the audience.
No, not me.
No, you're not.
No.
We're not voting on it.
No, you're not.
Information only, I don't know what that means.
Yeah, so good chair. I think there was councilman's slice request for just information only. We did send out the mailers to the community. As, yeah, I wasn't really informed about this, his request for this, just the information only. So I already sent out the flyers to the community, everybody who's, uh, buddy and a lot of the persons that are, we're sending.
Do you want to hear it real quick? I mean.
It should be very quick.
Why are we hearing something for information only?
As I mentioned, we typically don't do these things informationally. But I, I believe the councilman wanted this to be information only pending a community meeting. I think they will.
Yeah, I think.
We'd be hearing this officially.
Yes.
Actually, yes. I think this sign I now is for, just in time of the new year after there's been another, another community meeting specifically about the rezoning. And then bring it back for a final look.
Okay, okay.
Should be a really quickly.
So let me read it. Uh, we're, this is for information only, Lorraine Avenue rezoning. So I'm not going to treat this like a normal public hearing, although we'll take any comments that there are genuine used area, high districts, a carpool, some lamp, north and south of the rain between Rocky River and Valley View. Obviously, you're gonna present this question. You don't get to stay there.
Okay. Okay, thank you, ma'am chair. This is Xavier Bay, zoning section of city planning. So the main purposes of this zoning proposal is to consolidate a variety of zoning districts. This area has a hodgepodge mix of zoning, you know, in local retail, multifamily, single family. And so really just changing it to one comprehensive district to allow Cleveland Clinic to develop the campus better, right? Continue their current activities better. This also ensures future developments to meet communities' needs and enhance project that they're continuing to pose in the community. So here you see a map of the existing zoning. Currently, Cleveland Clinic's campus is local retail C4, multifamily C1, and local retail C1. And so the mapping proposal here is to consolidate the zoning districts north and south of Lorraine Avenue. And so, uh, south of Lorraine Avenue, we're actually proposing to drop the high district from four to three. So the high district three allows a maximum of 115 feet. And so the blue on the map indicates institutional research D3, high district of 115 feet. And then the light pink on the map there indicates institutional research D2. The high district two is the maximum of 60 feet in height. And this, those parcels in pink are the parcels used for parking, for employees, Cleveland Clinic, as well as two existing dental offices and medical offices. And then further to the right of the screen, the darker red shading indicates a local retail D2. And so this is really to increase the high district from one to two for these existing retail operations. And I believe, um, some of the work that they've been developing, corporations doing in the area, they stand. And so here's the current. Oh, yeah.
So I'm just gonna clarify, the multifamily, local retail, all of this?
Correct. So we'll.
There was the, this is institutional research.
Currently, yes.
I mean, this is obviously the, supposed, and you got local retail B2.
Yep.
Local retail C1 that's in a long way here.
So the proposal is institutional research in this light pink area. It's currently local retail, the, the red outlining.
This is the existing.
Correct.
Oh, good.
The red outlining and the red labels. The red outlining and red labels indicate the existing zoning districts. So I, yeah, I do understand how this could be a little misleading. I can actually change some of these shavings at the, at the.
No, it's fine. I got it now. So you're, you haven't shown us the proposed yet.
This, this is.
Yes, it is. It is.
Oh, this is the proposed. Oh, I got it.
This is the, this is the existing.
So the pink, you say?
What's changing?
So the, the light blue areas and the light pink areas are gonna be switched to institutional research.
But this will be institutional research?
Correct.
Who else?
Uh, these are all Cleveland Clinic's own properties.
And this too.
Correct. And these are self of Lorraine. And so the institutional research district is a, it's a, it's, it's basically a standalone district. So whatever's permitted in the zoning code for this district is permitted, whatever's not listed as per, permitted uses in this district are not permitted here. There are a handful of accessory uses such as parking, you know, big cars, things of that nature. And so our next, I just have a few current context slides I was gonna go through. So here you can see an aerial of the area. Next slide here, and some shots I took the other day going up and down Lorraine Avenue. Top left of your screen, you see the area proposing to help the high district. All these other photos are, well, these two on the right here are the Cleveland Clinic own properties. You can see in the dark background here is the existing employee parking lot that Cleveland Clinic owns, as well as the existing industry south of Lorraine. Now on the left here, this is, there's some of the context, this is the multifamily district that you saw on the map. Which isn't, we're not proposing to change the multifamily district. Here on the top of the screen, you see existing medical operations. So there's a dental office and some more offices here that are permanently construction. Bottom of the screen, you see somewhere the view going northwest of Lorraine Avenue. On the left, you see some of the existing Cleveland Clinic's campus. Right here, you'll see the shots just kind of going, continuing my stuff. Lorraine Avenue, the existing employee parking lot. At the bottom here, it's just, as if you're continuing up the street further, you see the existing retail meat shop. They're the, that we're not proposing to change. And then further into our program here, you see the existing Cleveland Clinic operations. And that's all I really have here, uh, show today. So just to clarify, the light blue and the light pink areas are owned by the Cleveland Clinic and we're switching those to institutional research. The light blue is, has a height designation of 115 feet maximum. Light pink is a height designation of 60 feet maximum. The red area, the dark red is local, local retail, proposing to go up in area in height. And that's to allow future expansion of those parcels. Both allowing expansion for area districts for residential uses they make in the future. And the high district is really just to continue that form throughout Lorraine.
Good, thank you. I don't think we're going to take any comment.
Would like to say one thing, not commenting, but I am gonna comment it from a diamond. The reason why I say that is there, this is part of planning. You can't buy for kidding, we're gonna do something over here. Oh, by the way, this is part of us. So that's for, for that reason, we're not commenting. However, this is a, a sliver. Your intentions later on is to do something, provide it, even if it's just conceptual. So we can all find, not do it in peacement, which is really how they do it, to leverage their vision. So I think that's unfortunate, but I'll, I'll, I'll stay there. Okay? And that was, this is for us. This is, you gotta manage this. The city has to manage this process.
Thank you all. We're now at Christmas, on holiday, if you know.
Whoa, no, it's director.
No directors. Yeah, just wanted to introduce Evelyn Rood, who is taking Michael's place as the planning commissioner administrator. She can jump in rather quickly. The list of all of our changes, uh, administrative place, so she.